Kind of word.
I kind of thought it was, but I didn't know for sure.
This is it's mine. I just set it down. Sorry. No, you're fine.
You're you're an elected official sitting in big boy.
Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order. The special meeting of the West Valley City Council is September sixteenth. Our twenty twenty five, we're beginning the meeting at four thirty P M. In the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present. Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Christensen. We have. John Flores, our assistant city manager, joining us at the table. Myself, Efa Peely, our city manager, Tom Hune. City Councilmember and Councilmember North Belt. And our city recorder is behind us, acting city recorder is behind us today. Um, Tara Smith. So we're going to turn the time over to Mr. Springmeyer. For our brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Jonathan Springmeyer, Economic Development Director. Um, and thank you for coming in on an off week and my apologies to the staff for coming in on an off week. I've been hearing about it. Um, we today's exercise is part of the contract um that you approved. Um, a couple of months ago on the land planning and design services for the property that we kind of. Refer to as the J R M property, but the property located approximately thirteen hundred west and thirty three hundred south. Um, roughly thirteen acres owned by the redevelopment agency. And in an attempt to see what we would like to do with this property, we have contracted. Uh, with our consultants that are here today to run through some exercises. And see if we can see what we want to do with that with that property. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ben Levinger with downtown redevelopment and let him take over.
Uh, hi, my name is Ben, Downtown Redevelopment Services, got Nathan Davis and then Ryan Wallace over there on the wall, fly on the wall. He'll step up later on. Uh, like Jonathan said, the purpose for today is we're going to do some land use exercises. Uh, we're not here to say it's definitively two, three or four stories. We're more worried about. What type of land you sit in, single family, multi-family, retail, commercial, whatever that may be. That's what we want to leave this meeting today with is what is the? Desire of this council and the officials that are going to partake in the effort to understand what that land will be. There is no guarantee that's what it's going to end up being because we're going to match with market realities. But we also want to understand what your desires are for the land since it is city held land or R D A held land at this point in time. It, sorry, I didn't click the right button. I always start everything with the schedule. I'm sorry, you're going to get a schedule out of me a couple of times through this project process. We're going to do quick introductions. I think we already did that. We're going to do a review of the land use. Could talk about tile game. We're going to spend most of the time with those sheets, the maps and the stickers you have in front of. So I guess without further ado, we're going to kind of roll into that where we are in the process. We've got a scenario framework developments workshop number one, which is where we're at now. Conceptual land use scenarios will come after that. We're working on those, but we're going to take your feedback and meld them all together. We're going to do initial review meeting and revision. So once we have an idea of where it's going, we're bringing it back to you guys. That'll be with more three D massings and models. So it'll show you what it looks like from different angles, what it looks like as far as uh housing, what it looks like as far as number counts, what that would mean. Visualizations will be the last or the second to last and the preferred scenario plan will be the last item. So we're kind of in the first third of the project. This land use scenario is going to help frame what that looks like. So you can see where we're at in the process. Um, I'll let Nathan take over for here and then I'll pick back up later.
Uh, so the exercise that you have before you is a tile game has been mentioned. We're going to run through a few, a few different land uses and what those might look like building uses as well. Uh, but what we're trying to get is a big picture scale. Um, we're not doing a building by building analysis or a parcel by parcel. Um, even though these are larger parcels currently, um, we're just trying to get more general feel for the distribution of uses and the distribution of density. Um, so this game is going to work uh by quarter acre uh parcels or grids that have been created out on the piece of land.
If everybody thinks this map, the easiest way to describe is just to show. The border you see is the actual parcels. The middle area that's cross hashed with the diamond pattern is your utility corridor. That's a nothing vertical area. So when you start thinking about, oh, we could put housing across, that's the hard barrier. It doesn't go there. And then each one of these tiles, as Nathan said, is represents roughly a quarter acre. So if you start going through this, just kind of keep that in mind.
So we did the best we could on the sides here, um, but as Benjamin said, mentioned, um, each is a quarter acre along the periphery. Um, just due to the the nature of it, um, there are some that aren't full quarter acres. Uh, but just use your stickers appropriately. Um, if you feel that uh there's enough space for said land use. Um, you're welcome to put a sticker there, understanding that it's not a full quarter acre. Um, but again, we're just focused on general patterns, um, not necessarily building footprints. Um, so once we have uh all of the uh land uses distributed throughout the map, uh, we're going to take this to build consensus. Um, and to move forward with a towards a more refined scenario. Um, and so as we work through the land uses, there will be trade offs. Um, there will be pros and cons to each. Um, and so we'll take everybody's thoughts and bring them together. Uh, so the land uses that we're going to go through and that you have stickers for are commercial, light industrial, which is more of a.
You guys want to call along. Assets for each for twos as well. Just in case you get lost.
And we'll go into more detail on further slides as well, uh, but just to go through the the overview. Um, there's mixed use residential, mixed use commercial, and we'll get into the difference of those. Multi-family residential, single-family attached residential with townhomes, uh, small lot detached residential, so small starter starter homes. Um, or they could be more refined, um, senior living as well. Um, small scale restaurants, small scale retail and small scale activation. Those last three are standalone commercial, but they're a little bit more walkable than the that first commercial. Um, so commercial as a land use as defined here, um, is a little bit more auto oriented. Um, so think strip malls, um, standalone, uh, retail restaurant, uh, but with a parking lot surrounding it typically something you find what.
Large lot. Where's large lot residential? Which sticker is that?
We you don't have enough made here to do a lot of large lot residential. Large lot by your standards is quarter and half an acre. Are you sure that's correct? Uh, the way we split it up, if we did thirty acres and we'll give you other stickers, you want to write it. It's not a problem. They're they're very hard to squeeze through their lots on the side.
How much acres is the lot? I mean, is the property?
Thirty thirty eight. With the the problem I think is the utility corridor runs down the middle. It splits it up. The west side is very small. And the east side is kind of an odd. Shit now, we're not saying you can't use them. We can make new sticker type. It's not a problem at all.
Where is the veterans memorial on this?
It's not the map. It's just off the map. We didn't touch it. It's entirely out of the air.
So do we have it on here? Yeah. So the memorial is up here. Or by a year.
I'm I'm just saying, because sixteen years ago, I drew this on this same piece of property.
And if you keep going, there is.
Yeah, yep.
The landmarks that go with it. Let's give you the apologies and we'll talk.
It's just up here. We're it's out of our study area.
We did purposely cut off all the memorial area, took and got rid of anything that could be used for later purposes. And it was carved out of the project here.
So for commercial, just to wrap it up, think strip malls, uh, more arterial focused design, um, less pedestrian or uh bike focused design. Light industrial flex space. Um, this can mean a lot of different things. Um, it could mean maker spaces warehouses. Um, uh, industrial use, but not something that's polluting, um, something that could be uh just a flex space uh for a variety of uses. Uh, mixed use residential. Um, so this is going to be uh just purely residential. I mean, including the ground floor. Um, so typically in this type of typology, you're going to have a a ground floor that's leasing office amenities, et cetera. Um, with units above, but no commercial in this. Uh, mixed use commercial here. So that's going to be ground floor, retail, restaurant, activation, um, anything of the like, um, with offices above. Um, let's see. Oh, actually, sorry about that. Uh, mixed use residential on the flip. That does have ground floor, uh, retail, restaurant, activation. Um, with upper floor, uh, residential units. Uh, there is the possibility to have ground for uh common area space like those that leasing office. And amenities, uh, but there is also um commercial on this. On the flip side, multifamily residential is that um typology where it's just purely residential with some common area space. Single family attached, again, your townhomes. Um, there's a variety of designs that take place in here, um, but typically about. That's not right there. Um, it's typically about ten units per acre. Okay, three units per quarter. This is three.
Well, it's also duplexes and triplexes and things that are. Uh, I think the term that most people go is missing middle housing, things that are not single family houses. They may have mother-in-law suites. They may have other things that go with it. I think the new term for builders is next gen house. I I don't know how they come up with their terms, but as we've seen a lot.
So apologies for the typo there. That is three units per quarter acre. Um, small lot detached residential. Um, so this is going to either be a starter home uh for a young family starting out. Um, or for a uh retiree couple, um, that's looking for a little bit more refined type of product. And that's about two units per quarter acre. Uh, small scale restaurant. So uh that's going to be something standalone, but still more urban oriented. Um, so something that can people can walk to um in such a type of neighborhood. Sm- small scale retail similar, uh, retail, but in a similar format, standalone, single story, maybe two story. Uh, but more urban oriented. And small scale activation. Um, this can be a variety of things. It's just kind of a catchall for anything that's not restaurant or retail. Uh, so it can be cultural amenities, um, services, uh, anything that doesn't fit neatly into restaurant or retail. Um, so Ben's going to take over for this slide. Um, we'll go through the game.
So just as kind of a quick recap, we're. There can be other types of typologies that go with these. If you want to take a different sticker, I think we've got. Ten colors of stickers, but you have twelve on your sheet. If you want to take a pen and write M for medium density housing or or for medium sized lots or L for large size lots, you're welcome to do that. We're not saying you can't do that. Um, what we put together are things that are likely scenarios to go on to that site based off of a couple of factors, which are. The accessibility of utilities, the cost of the lot and the return on investment that a lot of developers are looking for out of those areas. Um, what we're going to go through today and the purpose of the exercise again. I'm going to skip ahead and we're just going to look at the map on the screen. We need everybody to focus on what is going to go in each dot. What I want everybody to keep in mind is you have color match stickers to go with those types of typologies. So if you have. Commercial, there's a color match sticker that goes with it. Light industrial, there's a color match sticker on your sheet. If you run out, we have more stickers in the back. So don't feel like you have to use all the stickers if you don't want to. When you put the stickers on there, um, I'm going to give you one hint. They don't sum off. And if they come off, they rip the paper with it. So if you want to change it, just put another sticker over top of the other one. We did this a couple of weeks back and somebody gave us a ripped up sheet. They tried to peel all the stickers off. What we would tell you is focus on clustering development with everything being a quarter acre in size. We can't just have one quarter acre of townhomes next to one quarter acre of single family homes next to one quarter acre retail. Sometimes these things need to be clustered together. Uh, I would urge you to think through that as you go through and use your thought pattern. But what we need this to do is it's a high level land use uh tile game. Each one, each. Square and each sticker represents a quarter acre. What we're going to do is after this is all said and done. We're going to come together and draw a consensus out of what everybody has. So Ryan, Nathan and I are going to circle around and answer your questions. Make sure you have everything you need for this. Uh, and we're going to hopefully have a way for a map that we can put together and say. Generally, land use types in this corner is multifamily. In this corner is single family, large lot. In this corner is retail. In this corner is whatever it is. And then we're going to take all that data. Roll it together and make your preferred scenarios out of that. We did take a stab at some of your commercial or your tax, uh, taxation values. I come out of each land use type. I would not put a lot of effort into that right now. Because when we just take it on a quarter acre or acre basis, things change a lot. Once we get actual building sizes and we can get building values, we can be much more precise with valuations and taxation that will come from them. We put them there because we thought you guys might be interested in it. I wouldn't put a lot of play into those. What I will tell you is as you pull up this map. You're going to notice a pond. As we understand, that can be filled in and covered over. If you want to keep it, great. If you don't want to keep it, it's just a flat piece of ground. I wish we could just make it disappear and make it a flat site, but that's not the way it ground works. So just imagine it is not there and if you don't want it there. We would ask you to put a sticker on every square or be consistent and tell us what you want in certain areas and then. Make sure your stickers are on there accordingly. If you think it needs to go in multiple areas, just keep putting more stickers down. Um, and again, what I will also tell you is. Keep in mind that some of these are not full acre or quarter acres, such as, I don't know if you guys can see the cursor up there. You can still put a sticker on it. Just because it's not a full square, doesn't mean you can't put a sticker on it. Um, so we're going to. Turn this over to you guys and give you about ten to fifteen minutes to go through and think through what stickers go where.
So before we start that, I would like either Jonathan or. Steve Pastrick to come up and. Educate the council on how many residents really could support residential because. We tried this across the street on the Colosimo. We saved property for commercial. Um, had. I don't know how many. That's why I'd like to know how many units behind it that was supposed to be able to support that commercial and a commercial never took off. So I would like to know if commer- if there's enough. Potential housing, yeah, if any, if there's any potential. Amount of housing, we would have to have to have any retail even success. Or if it all just needs to be housing. Because it's far away from other residents.
Yeah, the so the Colosmo developed property, the. I'm trying to Jordan, not Jordan River, I'm.
Whatever it is.
That's right across the street.
Villages at river's edge. Thank you. It's Colosmo property to me. Um, yes, they had some set aside commercial. It was, it was designed. Intended to be accessory commercial for the units themselves. Um, it has not worked. It has not been successful and they have come back to us and asked to. Allow that to not no longer be commercial and allow that to potentially be residential. As far as massing. Like retail, this, this is a. I want to step on Ben's toes. This is somewhat of a challenging retail site. We have, we have, um, while we have good traffic on thirty three hundred south, it's corridor. Um, there's not a ton of residential in the area. And we have one of those natural mental barriers that we have as shoppers, um, which is the river. Choppers don't like to cross freeways. We don't like to cross train tracks. We don't like to cross rivers, just the mental barriers we have when we're going places. So it does have some challenging, um, retail. Probability to it. The number of units at that place was, I I think we've got, Steve was just going to grab that for me. Think we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred. Plus units over there, four eighteen, that was pretty close. Yeah.
For apartments, uh, it's. Well, once they convert the other units about two hundred, then maybe, and then there's forty condos.
Okay. Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, I I. I think Colosmo is a. He was trying to do is the mixed you bottom is a commercial top is a residential. That 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 wouldn't work out for him here in a city recently because we still have space. He can do that in a solid city. And I'm saying, but not very popular here in our city. Um, you can separate them, you know, commercial, also, and you can do residential, residential. But I'll do the mixed view.
Yeah.
Commercial on the top or residential won't work. Here in our city.
I think the other thing to to consider is while. While the product um of a mixed use didn't work across the street, that's also. Twenty now twenty year old product. And. While the. M- market changes, markets change how how residential inter mixes with commercial now is very different than it was twenty years ago. I'm not saying that we it's going to be a success over here. I'm saying I don't think we can make a flat out determination that because it failed across the street. In that type of project that it will absolutely fail here.
How many of the? Units under the parking garage? That were commercial have been leased out.
The retail spaces, uh, just one right now.
And that's the owner of the building?
No, 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 we have, yeah, we have, we got the taco place that's in there and they're they're awesome. You should check them out.
I just think there's places that people don't go to for commercial. So.
Yeah, yes, and I don't and I don't disagree with you.
Sorry.
I would just add that. Mayor, you'd asked about how much, you know, residential would be needed. I would look at it that um. Any commercial that goes in a site has to function on its own and any residential on the site would just be gravy, right? Like it's not. It any, any new commercial space has to be able to stand on its own. And the residential that would be on the site would be just like a small percent, very small percentage of the business that is.
Thank you for that. Now that's where that's where Colosmo property didn't succeed is the way it was oriented and the way it was built. It was designed to be. The customers were going to be the residents and that didn't pan out and it wasn't oriented to be out on the street.
The best way to describe it is be very sparing with your retail and commercial.
Yes, sir.
I know I'm stuck in the past. But. Sixteen years ago, we were talking about this as a gateway to the community.
It is still a gateway to the community. That part hasn't changed.
We didn't envision that much residential in it. At that time. But that's. That's just history.
Yeah.
We could never get the developer to do anything more than what they do along every main highway in the state. We didn't want that.
Sixteen years ago, the housing market in Utah was a radically different market.
Yes, it really was.
Yeah, I yeah, it's.
Yeah, I, I say something up. If you have a chance, you go to Chinatown in South Salt Lake.
Been there many times.
Okay, they open until eleven o'clock. You know that. And very, very big crowd over there for a lot of people.
Yep.
Young people. There's multi, all kinds of people, you know, I'm saying, black, white, yellow, red, everybody there. Uh, young, uh, young, young people that you want to enjoy, go out and have a dinner. Here in our city, to like go along with the nonsense. We have a kind of diversity, you know what I'm saying? Somewhere, someplace, we gotta find something, gotta represent our city. I, I'm not gonna take the whole thing for the commercial. But at least in the fun, you gotta do something. So people, like young people, they can come here and enjoy the dinner.
Yep.
Chinatown, they stayed there until like eleven, eleven thirty. They closed eleven thirty and you go there, wow, so crowded.
I, I think you hit it right on. It's just about targeted, specific areas of commercial, retail and restaurant that. Show a visual impact, but they also don't go past what you can absorb into your community.
And you've also pointed out the difference between accessory retail and destination retail. The reason that's successful, because there aren't a whole lot of residents around there either. Reason that's successful is because it's become a destination and people are willing to drive to it. So, you know, that's.
I, I will add though, one thing is we started studying this site. Having the cultural center nearby does lend you a fair bit of traffic to certain elements and certain times of the year. So. Think through how that may play into the site would be something to consider as well. Good. We're happy to answer any other questions. Ryan, I think we'll, you, Nathan and I will circle. Stickers, stickers, stickers. Put some stickers on the paper. You're a very kind first grade teacher, giving people lots of stickers.
So which color says?
Green. Yep.
Right.
There's a question about green space in parks, the green sticker. They want green space in parks, take the green sticker. Dark green?
Dark green, they're like.
I don't know.
You're asking the guy to color. Sort of the teal one on the, on the edge.
That commercial.
There's no green to use.
Use the purple for open space.
That is actually commercial.
Okay.
The top is, is the vacant.
Purple and then of course, second to last.
Can I borrow that?
Unused color.
And if you want, label whatever you want, do what he didn't just write directly on the sticker and say.
Uh, you wanna use the larger lot. You have some questions.
We had you down there, I went three times in the last. Like a Scott, he's already done. Oh, I see. Yeah, I took Brian, he didn't go with me last time, so I took him with me this time. Show him the. So what is right here?
There's a little parcel there that is.
To acquire it.
Right.
Have been unable to acquire that.
So there's a question about this parcel right here. It is not owned by the RDA, so we did not include that in parcels. So this area. Trying to move that and it's not the right. Right here, if you can see the cursor. You can see the road go around in the picture, this trapezoid.
About a quarter of an acre.
Uh, probably more like three fourths. But it's a very valuable three fourths. Okay, so there's a question for under the power lines. We've been in contact with Rocky Mountain Power. What you can plan for is recreational space, parking lots, trails, gazebos, a public restroom. You just really can't go vertical under the power lines. But if you want to say put in a public restroom, that's okay.
It already gives that while you're going to the bath.
I'm not making the rules, I am interpreting the rules.
How about the parking?
I'm sorry, parking? Yes. It's flat. So what, basically if you can think of something that would be flat, it is able to go in that. Diamond hatched area. We assume there'd be a large swath of parking and recreational space going through there. Cause that's really what Rocky Mountain Power likes to see under their power lines. Plus, you need more parking if you're gonna put density there, so you might as well use it.
I'm very bent of the cultural center. It's a shorter bus loop. But they used to that one.
I mean, there's also just.
Two options, both sticker sheets.
But you have more options.
You have any questions, Vanners? How's everybody doing?
Would five more minutes be good for everyone? Ten it is. There'll also be more time to come up with ideas as we reconcile everybody's sheets on the, on this thing here.
Yep.
Okay. I'm just wondering, is that Chick-fil-A, the name that Chick-fil-A on the face of this earth? Any other?
Yeah.
Chick-fil-A. And it's bigger than the ones in West Valley, right?
It did figure them the one on fifty-six for now, which is going to go under a major renovation since it's unopened.
So it's gonna get even bigger? And they were what?
Only in the south. Yeah.
You know, there was a lot of things that are only, yeah. And they are not open on Sunday. Even in the football stadium, they're in the football stadium.
No, she wasn't talking about Chick-fil-A. But not in. Waffle House is open, they're all, everything, hurricanes, tornadoes. Yeah.
I love my Waffle House.
They eat there.
I love my Waffle House.
See some real interesting stuff.
Especially where I go, it's really good. I love my Waffle House.
Where Waffle House is?
Atlanta. No. Atlanta. Down, down Atlanta. I won't go in that McDonald's because it is too scary. They're one by, the one, the main, us or train station. Yep. That one is scary. Well, every Waffle House I've felt very welcomed.
Well, good.
Something there is. Okay. Oh. Really? I remember you wasn't. Oh. The empty box. We want to call it that, but it's. What type of, you consider those? Or, so I mean, that's the size of pretty good, we just aren't free. Fans for the memorial. So phase one was the part we had.
Yeah.
It's designed, it's like the flag. Like those that are flying over. The water where the shapes from that things and then. You send that to me. Keep it open. Is one of the one for you to more improve or more please, I will make it better, right? Yeah.
Small, our commercial is gonna work.
It's, I mean, it's close to this.
Well, that's, I mean, not the large age. I don't think a small retail.
Yeah.
So we just.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's gotta be a destination commercial. And I don't know what destination commercial, because I went to Farmington Station, Farmington Station, once, we'll never go back. It's like, yeah, it's not that big a lot to do. It doesn't have any stores, it's nothing that here has, so. I know it's a, they wanted it to be a destination.
Any conversation?
Not in mine.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Are we doing a few more times?
Yeah. Cultures.
Yep, definitely of this one.
Veterans. I love our veterans, but it didn't match for me, but. When I saw this, leaving it out. I can give you. But now.
I understand.
Were you ready to start wrapping them up?
Yeah, and I'm not putting one on, that's teeny ones, what's next to it? But you don't have enough stickers.
We, we have extra sheets of stickers if you need a sheet.
I know, but it just seems like a waste of stickers to put on. On our house.
So.
It's not new to that.
We wanted to go around, people explained what was the most important area, what were your purposeful items, what you, give us thirty seconds of wanting to pick to put things where you did. Can we go around and do that? Start on yours.
Thank you. So. When I was first on the council, eleven years ago, Mayor Bigelow came to me and said, we, we need a veterans memorial, and I said, no, we don't. And then he said, let's put it by the cultural center, and I said, no, let's not. And. And I still did not super happy about veterans memorial. I love our veterans and I think they should be recognized, I just don't think that our residents should be paying millions of dollars for a memorial for them anyway. When we saw the plans in April of twenty twenty-one of phase one and then the rest of the phases, which included this whole property. And, and we have open space in there and a design that would make it look like a flag from, from airplanes passing by and. And I thought, open space there, something I could get behind. And so I, I would just love to see. Open space. There that's accessible and we could just wander through and. And. I think that would be a great gateway for our city. And, and an investment that will be appreciated for centuries.
But I, I pick it from the south to the north, okay, thirty-five minutes south. To the north, to the cultural center. So the south, I put line number one and line number two, the commercial from right to left, to the power, our light.
Okay.
And the line number three and number four, I pick densities from right to left, that's the power, power line. And number five and six, I go with the single family from right to left, from east to west. In the west side of the power line, I go all the way to basically just single families, except for the fun. The line number one and line number two, I kinda like a lot of small, nice park, so residential people there, they can take their dog out or walk along park or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
The majority, the dots I have here is multi-family. Just looking at. Multi-family and then single family attached. It just seems to make the most sense, and so I have them just. Blending into each other.
So starting with more dense on thirty-third and going less dense as you go north?
Yeah, and then I, I've included, you know, mixed use, residential mixed use commercial, one little commercial hopeful, you know, it has, obviously has to be the right destination one, but.
I promise, if you put a swig there, it'll be busy.
Yeah. Or what you said, the third Chick-fil-A or something, but. Majority of the, majority is, and then going, abutting against the corridor for multi-family, you can utilize that as potential parking.
So most of my mixed use, I really don't want mixed use, I just want multi-family. So ignore those, make them brown. Um, but I did just a little bit of commercial at the intersection of thirty-third and. Cultural Center Drive. I don't wanna call it that, but anyway, Cultural Center Drive, just because I don't think that this many residents and it's not the destination that I really think people will come to, so I really don't think it'll turn into commercial. I think it'll be multi-family housing more. I did the single family detached in the interior pockets. Because I mean, this could be kind of the same look as Daybreak. In fact, the whole thing could be the same look as Daybreak with some townhomes, and that's the one thing I wish you had had is the townhomes instead of a multi-family residential.
Single family attached.
Okay, so more attached around the outside. And then, I think I put them up here. But I just don't think there's the. Traffic, I mean, traffic going by, but it's not a destination for commercial. Small resident, or small retailer otherwise.
I'm hoping you're gonna make it to that.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
No. I basically use the small scale activation, cultural venues and that with. Some open space in between. I remember somebody said purple is open space. Got the.
It doesn't make sense, but yes, that is the color of the.
Yeah. And then small scale retail and small restaurants.
Okay, so when you say small scale, were you thinking like one or two stories and more, I think we would call them outlawed parcels, so. Drive up to destinations, or is this more you're thinking walkable area?
As I told somebody, that's why my train set is new. Doesn't look organized, I can never decide what to put in one. One lock. Or why I've got churches in the middle of industry, you know, and fit. I'm thinking, you know, if we make it. If it becomes kind of the destination, we want it to be in the gateway. Everything in there should be walkable.
Okay. Great.
Parking lots wherever.
Where they fit.
Where they fit.
All right, I did a small scale retail and restaurant along thirty-third. On the northeast, multi-family residential. On the northwest, single family attached. And then obviously some open space and what you call small scale activation along the corridor. With a little bit of mixed use residential and a master center area.
So over here, I put.
You make it look like flags?
It's attached housing, townhomes, that I would hope would be ownership opportunities for, for our residents. And then open space, the, I don't know what small scale activation is, but. It, it's gonna be attached to the open space, kind of be a transition to the multi-family in the back, and then. Some destination commercial in the front, and then Fat Fish is gonna move right here.
And if it's good, it's worth driving.
It is.
Uh, let's see, so I, I went back to our strategic planning and looked at our main goals, and one of them was attractiveness and. And I just don't think this is just another piece of developable land that, that, you know, it's right next to one of the natural resource and. Um, I think I'm more aligned with. With Lars, except for the veteran angle. We'll discuss that later.
I love veterans. I, I just think our money could be spent, even if we wanted to give things more for veterans.
So I, I did small town retail all along thirty-third, and then the rest of it is simply just open. Open space.
The brown that you have on there, the.
I, yeah, I ran out of stickers I wrote open on, oh, okay.
Okay, so starting on the veterans memorial is, I had that being open space, I feel like that's a good segue into that. Over into the corridor, I have that open space with parking as well, even though we want a walkable, there will be people that will wanna drive there and have access, so I think parking is important. Just below that open space, I actually had single family attached, I was thinking of a Daybreak type thing on smaller lot, single family surrounded by open space, parking. Along thirty-fifth, I put small restaurants and small retail, and then I put mixed use in the middle there, or sorry, uh. Multi-family, multi-family residential, and then I outlined this with commercial and, and just because I wouldn't wanna live right along a road and commercial might drop people in as well, so that was my thinking there.
So hearing everybody kind of sounds like. As a whole, people agree with targeted commercial at the gateway, just limited commercial kind of over here in this sector. And then having a mixture, I, I kinda wanna take a hands pull, how many of you are comfortable with multi-family housing on the site?
A little bit.
What would you call a little bit?
Not many dots I have.
Okay, how many of you are comfortable with single family attached? If it was single family attached ownership, would that change any of your thought on if it was for purchase as opposed to for rent?
I would like all to be purchased, no for rent.
Okay. Um, what do you, small lots, who is in favor of small lot residential?
It's the same with the Daybreak look, yeah.
We can talk about that now, the Daybreak look is very distinct, so you have houses that circle common greens, is that kind of what you're going for? Are you more, Daybreak is also unique because it has duplexes, triplexes, row homes with melded into single family homes, and they're not broken into districts, they're just melded together into one cohesive community, or is that more of what you're?
That's great.
Okay. Open space is important, especially if your houses are close together, the kids need to go somewhere.
And let me ask, so if the kids went over to the cultural center lawn to play, would they get kicked off? Because personally, I think we have a lot of open space right there. Would they get kicked off? I mean, we have the. Launch for the Jordan River right across the street from this, and some open space there, and then you've got the open space at the cultural center.
Get the rec center that's.
Right around the corner, yeah.
We're also developing a, a huge park there, north of the. Of the. Cultural Center, when I say we, I mean the county and, and other partners.
Yeah. So for me, open space in this area wasn't as important as the correct housing.
But having the right style and amount of open space that matches the residential is important. Okay, as we kind of went from west to east, west, everybody had kind of a similar theory behind small lot, single family, single family attached and some green space. Can we all agree it's green space and parking underneath the, the utility corridor? Does anybody have other ideas? They want us to ask Rocky Mountain Power, then I can come back in a couple of weeks and say they said no. Okay.
One thing I also heard on the west side of the utilities, man, is commercial along thirty-third, is that correct? In the dominant theme?
So does everybody think it should be facing up against the curb? Um, part of the issue with your allotment on, or the new, the development twenty years ago on the south side, was this all parking and all the retail faces in towards the, the people?
You can see it from thirty-third. You can see the commercial from thirty-third if anybody had ever looked. There were a couple that did, that came and went.
Okay.
You could see them all, the windows faced thirty-third.
Okay, we'll go by again. If you were gonna pick a spot for multi-family, where does everybody think it should go?
Long thirty-third.
Long thirty-third?
Just me, I don't know about anybody else.
Yeah, and I, I'd think. Closer to. To northern.
So.
The curve area.
I thought the single family detached being the, the interior or attached, yeah, instead of out on the road.
So there's. As I think about it, there's a couple issues, you've got. Some. Less desirable things that happen across the street, right? So the ownership stuff, I would want further from that, separated by the corridor.
So to the north or to the south?
But the ownership stuff would be to the, to the west.
Yes, yeah.
But you could, you could do multi-family and. Arch structures or however you wanna do it to kind of buffer. The road and, and across the street from the road. So that's why I was separating the ownership versus multi-family.
You said less desirable, you referring to south of thirty-third?
No, I'm, I'm.
East of the river.
Talking about the, yeah, the river area, there's homeless there and.
There's a homeless center right down the street.
Yeah, there's a homeless facility.
Resource.
Just on the other side of the, the river from here.
On the other side of the street and it's along, along with the jail right next to it.
So as far as types of retail, what do you guys envision being on this site, knowing that it's got hard barriers on at least two of the sides? Uh, and nothing's gonna change on the third, what type of retail do you guys see being here?
A small market.
Like a bodega type of?
The, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, my ideal would be.
Everything that's on you.
Just a small, like even a Walmart, little Walmart thing.
The two. The two tenants.
So like the harm, it, Herman's makes those little neighborhood market type things.
Just a little Walmart. Yeah, I would, the thing I wouldn't want is your strip mall type things.
You want the buildings up against the back of the sidewalk and have that kind of gateway as you.
Works throughout the city, we've been doing that. And then the parking on the interior, that type of thing.
The cultural center there, for culturally oriented market.
Yeah. Well, that would be the little, I think that'd have to be the little retails, I think you need a normal market, yeah. Yeah, both of them. Yeah, that's one thing that's always been lacking over there, there's the one Lucky's across the way, but. Well, that's true. But we need, I, I think other options would be good.
So.
Yeah. Vulcan, uh, maybe Vulcan. Door or something, you know, they have Vulcan people around here in our city too. Yeah. So. Hi.
If you guys were gonna say how many floors the multi-family would go, or what the tallest buildings would be, what would you say? Two, three, four? Five?
I think that right.
Five.
Would require an elevator.
I can go five, six or seven.
Okay.
What do you have to have to require an elevator?
Three.
Three or four.
Three.
Three, you have to have an elevator?
Over forty-five hundred square.
Depends, I mean, if you're units, three floors, you don't have an elevator, like Aaron Hills, those are three stories, that's one unit. Oh, the, the one units, one. Units, three stories.
Like a townhome, doesn't have an elevator, unless you're really rich and put one in.
No, four stories without an elevator, so it's five.
And is that building code or?
Fire. There's a, there're the four-story apartments over by, not new, around by the door, those are four-story walk-ups.
Okay.
Are they new or are they older?
Five, six, seven.
Getting to fourteen. If they're gonna be single floor townhouses or apartments, I think they have to have elevators.
I don't know many people that wanna carry a case of water up ten flights of stairs.
And if you live in New York, not even three.
I don't even think they enjoy it.
No, they don't enjoy it, they just have to do it.
Yeah, I think you could, you could look at, you could grab by thirty-third and about West Temple, there's a multi-family building there that's called, I think it's Moda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's gotta be at least five stories. That, that's what I, kind of in my mind.
Right, would you say that height is really in targeted pockets only, or is that more throughout the site?
Mine's targeted.
I'd say targeted.
Again, we're just trying to get all this information so we can boil it all together.
I'll get, I, I go with target.
Brian, I mean, those are, those are our questions, you have any want to ask?
Follow us on the east and we step in on as we go west.
Good questions.
I would like you.
Uh, that's what we needed to get out of you today, so thank you for playing that sticker game.
I love those.
Nathan will grab them from you, are there any questions that you have for us? Okay, the next steps for us are, we're going to boil all this together and come up with some preferred scenarios, and they will be before you guys in the next couple of weeks, so we'll say. Uh, they'll have 3D massings with floor heights, and you'll see what it looks like, and what that transcribes from a sticker game onto a 3D model. The purpose is for somebody to say, yeah, I said six stories, but I really didn't mean it. Or wow, five doesn't seem too bad, let's try six, we wanna give you what that'll look like, and that way you can tell us yes or no. Uh, and then from there, we'll have one more, we'll take that meeting and refine those, take pieces and parts out of all of them, and make one preferred scenario. Um, and then we'll come back to you again. I think Jonathan's got a wrap up.
Thank you for doing this, I. It was valuable, Steve and I were sitting in the back listening and, and chatting, and it was valuable for us to hear not only why, where you wanted things, but why you wanted things as, as we try to. Read your minds and come up unsuccessful with that often, um, so thank you for doing that. As Ben said, this is an ongoing process, we've been working a staff with them, weekly meeting, so we'll, we'll work with our consultants, come up with the preferred scenario plans and bring it back to you, see how we did. Any other questions for me before we, or for Steve, before we, before we wrap here? Okay, thank you.
So we have no other business. So we have no other business, so one more.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye. To get next Tuesday.